There we go. So, welcome, welcome, everybody. I don't know if you're as shell shocked as I am by the disbelief that we are starting this all again. Feel like we just finished it. So, yes, the school, new school year is upon us and some are starting today, tomorrow, etc., next week. And my first wish is a fantastic, joyous, productive, loving school year for all of you. So, I'm very happy to see you here at our pre-registration town hall. And as usual, we have some great changes to the program, always listening to your feedback, trying to implement as many as we can, and really provide you with what you need, because that is what this program is all about. It's for you. So, now that I have recorded, we will start with kind of real quick introductions. Jessica, I mean, Sarah, if you could switch. Thank you. So, we're going to start with our executive director, Thomas Foltz. He is on the call. And so, he is with us. He is with us today. And we have Jessica Guthrie, our development manager. She is in the car, almost home. And we have Sarah Stewart on the call. She is helping me with tech. She is our marketing and program coordinator, though. So, all the really cool things you've been seeing on our social media is as a result of her hard work. So, I hope you're enjoying all of that. And I'm Beth Lenhart. I'm the Director of Arts Education, and primarily the one you're going to go to if you need anything for the Schullers. So, that is me. Thomas, did you want to say anything to the group?
I just wanted to say welcome to everybody. We're super excited about a couple of the tweaks for the Schullers this year. I just made it to my first one this past season. Cannot wait for another one. Glad you're all here so that we can, things can go smoothly this whole year. As always, please feel free to reach out to Beth or myself if you have any questions or concerns. Have a great school year.
Thanks, Thomas. Jessica, did you have anything to say? Are you where you can say it? If not, then you can jump in whenever, okay? Sarah, anything for the group?
Let's do this. Let's do this.
That was, that, there you go. Let's do this.
That's it.
Okay. Matthew Petty will be joining us eventually. He is our-
I'm here.
Oh, there, oh, you're in a new, where are you? There you are. It's not showing up on my list. You are here. So, Matthew Petty is our production manager, and he helps us more than just at the show itself. He helps kind of the setup and make sure all these strange things that I require or request actually happen. And they're mostly to make your life easier, but it makes his life complicated. So, I appreciate him and for showing up. And if there's anything with tech or a system thing that we can't resolve, we will find the answer for you. So, let's keep going. To the next slide. You got it, Sarah? There we go.
Is it lagging for you?
Yes.
Okay. I think there's a lot.
Okay. Sorry about that. Well, hello, Dalton. I just saw you pop in. Hello. So, our mission, this is year 18, everybody. It's amazing. And we have been on a journey, and I hope those that have been with us for some time have seen the evolution in what we're trying to do and where we're trying to grow. And those that this is your first year, we'd love to have you onboard at this juncture, because you're getting the upgrade and all the nice changes for this year. We, we have a multiple faceted mission. We want to empower your students, the young artists of tomorrow. We want to support your theater program at your school and your surrounding community. But we also want to make sure that we can have this program more accessible so that, that these transformative performing arts experiences are for as many as possible across our state. So, that's our mission, in a nutshell. Yeah, the lag's killing me. Obviously, we have our idea policy. We follow our own idea policy. That is part of our program. And as a registered director, you will see and read all that. We also abide by the Broadway League Statement of Equity and Inclusion. And so, those are all in place to make sure that we are the leaders in encouraging all participants in to have a welcoming, safe space to create and to express themselves. So, the next part, as she's moving on, since I have the mouth. We have new things happening. The first, you're already aware of. Open registration. No more stress. No more panic. We have a timeframe across which you can casually, easily, stress-free, not only fill out all the important details, but you can actually read. You can read all the documents. You don't just click, 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 and then tell me you read it, and you really did not. So, you can, you can actually read it, because you have until 7 o'clock to fill that out. If you have any issues, you're going to reach out to me, and we will help you through it. And you're not going to panic, because we make this happen for all people under all circumstances. So, I'm going to do what few do, and I'm going to put my cellphone in the chat. And that's what you text or call. You can also email me at e lenhart@artsbridgega.org if you have an issue. Those are for me to be accessible to you. I don't want you to panic. I can, we can solve your problem. You can communicate with me. So, definitely save those, that they'll be helpful. If you get lost, I don't want you to feel like you are alone. You are with me. I will handhold you through the whole process. I will tell you what you need to, I swear. So, no problems. Please call me, and we will take care of it. It is on Wednesday, August 6th, from 3 to 7. Okay? And I'll go through what the process is. I'm just kind of highlighting the new things for now.
We need all the things.
I'm going to mute some people that are, have their thing open. If you want to say something, though, please let me know, and you can jump right in. Mentorship track, we have a new track choice. That mentorship track is really for the growing program, one that's never done it before, and maybe feeling like they didn't want to jump all the way in to getting scores, like you want to just dip your toe in the pool. If you're having a transitional period in your program, you had a lot of seniors graduate, you feel that it's a little too green, you want to give them more feedback, and a feedback-focused kind of program and year, then this could be for you. It is a lower price. You'll have fewer adjudicators and more immediate feedback. We still have our competition track. Please note, we do have a new price. It's $2.50 instead of $200. And we'll talk more about the things that are available for that. The other things, we have a new student scholarship process. So, what we've been encountering is that students are just applying, and we try to match them. But we match them without really knowing if they really want that scholarship or can attend that scholarship. So, we have a new process, and Jessica and Thomas are gonna spearhead that. They are going to get all of the things together. They're gonna fill out, sorry, the students are going to fill out an interest form that will be found on our website, hopefully soon, within the next week or two, probably. You'll fill out that interest form, they will, and they will be told when the application opens. They'll be sent reminders. But in the meantime, they can gather all their required information and docs. Some of that information is transcripts, and we all know what the process is at a school to get things in a timely manner. So, you have all this time to help them gather what they need, recommendations, anything like that. There's a whole list in our packet of scholarship, what you'll need, so you can refer them to that. And then the scholarship itself is actually going to open on a date that usually it closes. So, that is the difference. We're going to open our scholarship, so, on January 13th of 2026, and they're going to have essentially one month to fill it in, but with specific choices that they can make. This way, we're going to get better matches to the people who are applying to what they need, want, and hopefully, we can provide them. So, the interest form is really important, though, because it's things that we can feed to our partners to tell them what our people want. So, it's a really important step. So, I encourage any student that you have within the program, on and off the stage, they are eligible for these kind of scholarships. Tech students also, I want to reiterate that, we will have some tech opportunities. We want to make sure everyone in that craft is covered. So, the more you fill out in that interest form, the better for how Jessica and Thomas can go about matching everybody and getting what you need. So, the next thing that's new, and this is just highlights, we'll go over more detail in the director's meeting, but this is just giving you what you need to know. So, we did raise our fee $50 from $200 to $250. And we kind of took the lead off of some feedback that we got from a teacher's town hall meeting, where there are some schools that could pay a little more in a, and some that need more. So, we're creating our, like, scholarship fund. It's Places Please Fund. It means if you want to apply to get your $2.50 registration fee covered, you can apply, and there is going to be a link for you to do that in all the information you get. Or you can add a little to your app, to your invoice as a donation addition that will only go to this fund. It doesn't go anywhere else. So, it allows you to pay it forward, or it allows you to get into the spotlight, depending on what your needs or your position is. So, this will hopefully help any school where the registration fee may be difficult for you to handle, given any kind of financial circumstances. We also will have a replacement of the three and three director's letter. We will be having more of a director's control in a pick six. That only is for any school that is adjudicated by or on or before February 15th of 2026. We can give you a pick six. That means instead of the adjudicating panel deciding which three successes and which three areas of opportunity they want to give you, you actually can control what you get. Maybe there's a specific interest that you have because of decisions that have to be made. So, what you'll do is you'll add that, and you'll very much customize what kind of feedback you get more immediately. So, if you go before February 15th, you will get your pick six within two to three weeks. So, that way, you can act on those six categories right away. So, what can I promise those that go after February the 15th? As of February 16th and on, you will be fast-tracked in getting your comments, your full comments first on the list. So, usually, I go chronologically. So, what I will do instead is start from February through March and give you all your comments, and then go back to the beginning of the year to get everybody else's. This way, you too, the goal is, you too will get all of your evaluative comments before the end of the school year. And I know that has been a big thing that we've been trying to get both quality and speed in place. So, those are a few things that we are changing for this next year. Also, one more thing that I didn't put in there, and you can keep it on this slide, Sarah, that's not a problem. We also have a new director's check-in. A director's check-in will now be an automatic 20 minutes post-show. The directors will go into the adjudication panel room and have some questions and of clarity and celebration, and also advocacy, where you will be asked a specific question, how can we advocate for you? So, that way, the adjudicators are not guessing how they can help you, but rather, you can be given the platform in order to say directly what you can do. So, I think that's an important part. It allows clarity. It allows you, if there was a last minute something, you have the opportunity to go into that room. It will be led only by our advisory committee member. They will lead the discussion. The panel will be present, but the doing the talking will primarily be the advisory committee member with the director. But it's a great opportunity to, if something happens, or you need extra explanation, something happened, and something changed, it gives you the opportunity to clarify anything. So, another important document that I'm working on, also based on feedback of both adjudicators, advisory committee members, and also teachers, is how do you really understand the differences between the scores, a four and a five, a six and a seven? Sometimes, it's wonky to discern the differences. So, I'm creating and have created a new document, and you will have access to that document. So, you can have it for your teaching purposes, to see what the difference is, so that we can, in a more concrete way, tie or root what is a subjective process to more concrete descriptions within the numeric valuing of criteria. So, every single criteria of every category will be listed, 10, 9, 8, all the way to 1, and you'll see the difference of each criteria in a description. It will help make sure adjudicators are understanding the difference when they feel like they're in between numbers, and it'll give them more clarity, and it'll give you more clarity as to what does this number even mean. So, we find that it's a great way to strengthen the alignment between scoring and feedback, more consistency, clarity for all, and just transparency across the program. So, obviously, as part of our mission, this is more of a general statement. What we really want is to spread love and kindness and camaraderie and overall community. It is about how we can go in and help you as an extra resource. Many of the teachers are so limited to what they can do because of the staffing, or what is on their plates, the expectations. This is our way of trying to be in your corner, and that's what we hope we spread, not just what we can do inside your school. How can we move the needle or help you be a resource as you move the needle? But how can we be a community, everybody celebrating all the accomplishments of everyone involved? So, that's, that's the gist. That's what I want to make sure everyone walks away with. So, we still have 15 categories, but 16 actual awards within those categories, because supporting performers are two. There's two different ones. Non-gendered performers, so that gives us our 16 within our 15 categories. Plus, we have our three specialty awards. So, we have Showstopper, Spotlight, and Standing Ovation. Showstopper and Spotlight are usually, but not always, a performing-type school award. Standing Ovation is a celebration of basically what you enter in your director's application when talking about what are the ways that you create an opening space, an open and welcoming space for your students and overall community. So, that's where we pull the Standing Ovation primarily from, and also, and also observation, observation of what the adjudicators are seeing in the space when they go to adjudicate you. So, those are still our award categories. No change is really there. Okay? So, some other new things. Very important when it comes to category eligibility. I spoke to this at the end of last season, but I want to definitely call it out, that overall production requirement, there's something new. To be eligible for an award, the new part is you have to have 10 or more eligible categories. That means if you have five ineligible categories, you are not considered for overall production. Ineligible means that you've probably hired a professional contractor, or you've hired all your musicians, or you've rented all of your set or costumes. So, those kind of things, we want to make sure that what we're really trying to promote is student-focused. So, eligibility can be all Georgia high schools, organized homeschool groups, and the, like, theater groups for the high school age, and student and school faculty-focused leadership and execution, and other additional requirements, because every category has certain things. So, for example, choreography, you can use up to 10, I might wait, I can't remember if it's 10%, 25%. I'm getting all the percentages mixed. For orchestras, 10% can be a professional, based on the total number. For choreography, you can have up to 25% taken from some other original source material. That is so that you can honor certain expectations of the audience, but that can't exceed that percentage of what the choreographer can take from original source material. Scenic design, what has to be designed versus constructed, who can construct it, must be students and faculty. Parent involvement will disqualify you from that category. So, make sure you're really reading those eligibility requirements. So, that is, that's a change for overall production requirements. This is more of a reminder, because people get it confused. Leading performers, to go on towards a leading performer nominee, you have to have that show and role listed on the Broadway League's qualifying roles and show list. But let's say you really want to do a show that isn't on that list. It doesn't mean you can't be in the Schullers. Yes, you can. It just means you can't qualify your candidates as leading performers for nomination. That's all that would mean. So, just keep that in mind. We want this program to be for all, not just for the two individuals that go forward. So, if you really want to do a show that isn't on that list, you can. We, we will give you feedback, and you are eligible for, for all other categories, except for the leading performers in that case. Okay? But they, the candidates before you're listing, some people list, other people do not, want to tell their people who's the leading actor or actress ahead of time, and I support that choice. That way, less problems, less disappointment. But whoever you are doing it, they have to be available to go to the Jimmy's, to attend the full-time there, the audition process, the rehearsals, and the show. Okay? So, let's quickly talk about adjudication, because as we've opened up registration, and hopefully, we will get even more schools participating, the way we can match a school to a full adjudication panel in order to confirm your date is having more adjudicators. So, in case you were wondering, this is who our adjudication panel is made up of. Casting agents, directors, retired educators, higher ed faculty members, industry professionals, teaching, teaching artists, and more. So, we have all those people involved, and we'd love more. Training happens in September, so there is time to onboard people. So, if you know of people, the more recruiting we can do of getting good adjudicators, the more schools we can confirm with a full adjudication panels. So. Um, registration. Let's get into the nitty-gritty. Okay? So, there is a getting ready before August 6th, that if you haven't signed in to Accepted to Create login credentials, that's the first thing you're going to do. I put the address right there, www.getaccepted.com. You're going to log in, create everything you need. Then, you're going to click the directory and search for Arts Bridge Foundation. Once you find us, you can click on our logo, and it will take you to our landing page. Please read the landing page. Has a lot of new information. It also has a lot of links. So, if you don't know where to find it, oftentimes, it'll be in that, in one of the landing pages that you get. Okay? So, really important. So, read all the instructions before August 6th. Okay? Once August 6th comes around, you're going to complete your, your registration application between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. There's really easy, seven, seven, eight questions, I think. Petty, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's seven questions. It talks about, oh, maybe eight, now that we have a track selection. So, we have personal data, your name, all simple stuff. You all know this. Your school data, their name, address, phone, which track you want, whether it's mentorship or competition, and then some acknowledgements, that you know that the price is $2.50, that you'll attend the director's town hall. So, those kind of things are acknowledgements that you will find on the registration application. Once you complete it, you're going to hit submit, and you will get a confirmation message. In the confirmation message, you'll get a rejects code. If you could move on to the next slide, Sarah? Thank you. So, the rejects code, the purpose of it is you ended your registration application. Now, you have to link and begin your director's application. So, you click on director's application, and the first thing it will ask you for on, well, before August 11th, so you'll get it on the 6th, and sometime before the 11th, you go into your director's application, and you enter the rejects code. Once you do that, your, your registration is now linked to your director's application. Okay? So, you will get a confirmation message with your rejects code in it, once you hit submit on your registration application. In a separate email, we, thanks to Matthew Petty, he has automated that all those registered will get a separate email containing your invoice. So, you don't have to request it. It will come automatically to everybody, and you can start on whatever you need as far as a process to complete payment. Same as last year, we have credit card as well, which is a quick link that you click payment on, and we also have accepting checks. But we have to receive it in our offices before the due date. So, keep that in mind with the mail issues of Georgia. If you are pursuing the mentorship track, you will also get in the confirmation message a discount code. When you go into your payment link, you click on the payment link, and you'll enter the discount code where it indicates, and it will adjust your price to the $1.25. Okay? That way, you know. So, that's where you find all those things, in your confirmation email. So, fast forward, you've done those steps. You are now in the director's application. You've entered your rejects code. Section A opens on August 11th. That's correct, Tracy. There is not a limit of how many schools can compete as far as registration, but we have, the trick will be, in Tracy's question, the trick will be making sure we have a full panel for everyone. So, I can confirm your registration, but selection of date and filling with adjudicators is the next step to confirm whether we can send a full panel for you. So, that's why it's important, if everybody helps get us plenty of adjudicators, that helps us have as many as we need in order to fulfill all the demand. Also, the, just as an aside, I had removed, two years ago, the limit on the weekend performances. I try and meet you where you need it, and we have opened that restriction to as many as we can, as many as needed, but needed, but there's guaranteed spots that you can grab, that we guarantee your full adjudication team. But if you, you pick a slot that's already full, and you have to make a request, then I have to go about trying to find you an extra panel for those already occupied days. That's where a bigger pool of adjudicators really is beneficial to everyone to get the dates they want. So, I wanted to make sure I got you, Tracy, with your question. So, the section A opens starting August 11th at 8:00 a.m., and it closes August 15th at 5:00 p.m. Now, if you have a date that you know is typically very congested, of everybody wanting those dates, then you need to get onto the director's application earlier to try and get the date, so you can get a confirmed adjudication panel and not have to be waiting for me to find you one. So, that's an important thing to note. If you have like a March date, or even end of February sometimes can get a little tricky, then you want to fill it out the first day. If you don't have one of those dates, you pretty much can guarantee that it'll happen, depending, but you have a little more time. So, that's why I'm giving you until the end of the week to fill that out. But you don't get to the adjudication calendar until you fill out the entire section A, which is not a lot. I don't want to scare you. It's still pretty, fairly quick. You have, though, in addition to the personal and school data that you may need to re-enter, because when you transition from the registration to the director's application, it may not store that data. Okay? So, you may have to re-enter. Basic production information. So, the name of your musical, your licensing house, and your run dates. If you do not know them, please put title not- If you do not know them, please put title not available yet or to be determined. Put something in that field, otherwise you can't submit the form. But let me know that it's in process. Okay? You have a few more acknowledgements. Section due dates and season and adjudication payment acknowledgements. And then you have digital signature documents. That means reading your director's agreement and signing off on that. It's a digital signed document. Mandated reporter and our idea policy. We ask this of every year. Let me answer some questions. If a professional serves a school as guidance, does that make them unusable as a judge? If they are contracted by the school, if they are, if they are faculty on the school, if they're contra- or a contracted position used by the school frequently, yes, they can, it can still count. Just give me the heads up on that and we'll offline talk about the details to make sure that that's all a yes. Then other question, am I correct in hearing that all schools will be adjudicated, but some with not a full panel? So what I'm saying is I ca- I can register everyone and everybody can find a date. If you, if your date that you want is already full with the two allotted slots, if you're requesting an additional date, I can't guarantee a full panel. But let's put it in context. The last two years, when we had the platform issues and we accepted all applicants, we found everybody's date and a full panel for, for all sixty-four people at schools. So it's possible, but you may just have to have more patience. And that's why I like to put it into the community as help us get more adjudicators and then everybody will have what they need. So that's really the key. Okay, and I'll keep going. If you have more questions, you can put them in the chat, I'll answer them as I go. And I also will answer anything at the end. So let, now you've submitted your section A. In your confirmation message, you will get the link to the adjudication date scheduling calendar. That's how you're gonna select your, your date. Okay? Troubleshooting, because sometimes this happens. The link doesn't work or something's wrong, or you get a delay, or your firewall at your school is causing a problem. Your troubleshooting is you go into the tab that says scheduling and you can select from there your time slots. Okay, that's how you can also access. So keep that in mind that there's other ways around it. Ten guaranteed adjudication slots per weekend throughout the season, starting with Thursday. There are two school spots, Friday two. There's four on Saturday, but two are matinee hours and two are evening hours. And then we have Sunday matinee as two spots. Those are guaranteed. If we go above that, then I try and find something that works for everybody, whether it's a Sunday evening that I try not to do, but if it needs to be done, I will do it. I'll, I'll figure out a third school on any one of those days. So that's when I start negotiating with everybody. That's why I need your run dates, just so I see what's possible. And then we'll have conversations. So if you didn't get a confirmed date, you and I will talk. We will have conversation and we'll figure it out. My goal is to do just that. My goal is to get you what you need and what you want. Jacob, so just to have everything in order, it, is it only the two fifty fee or are there more fees? Nope, it's only two fifty. For us, it's two fifty. Sequoia, not sure if you have mentioned it, but what are the adjudication window dates? I'm going to mention, yeah, I'll mention that. It's coming up. So our alternate date request, let's say, nope, go back, Sarah. Let's say you did not get the spot you wanted. What do you do? Well, there is a link found in the section, also in the section A confirmation message, which will say alternative date request form. Click on that, fill it out, and then you and I will talk. What to expect? So this is how this works. If you've had a confirmed date and you've got a spot, that calendar gets released first to our adjudicators for selection. I fill out our guaranteed spots first. Once they do that from the first to the third, I open up all remaining dates. That means alternative dates on the fourth and the fifth. And I start begging and pleading to our adjudicators to please take on more schools. So that's how that works. And I keep bugging them until I try, I actually get it. If I have a big issue, we'll talk to try and figure out what is our wiggle room. So that's, that's kind of how that works. I wanted to make sure you were aware of how I release all dates, but I do the guaranteed ones first, followed by the remaining ones. You will only get a confirmation from me when I have a full panel for you. Now, let's say there's a conversation where I, I hope not, that this is not the case. I have, I didn't happen last year. Let's say there is not an adjudic- full panel to be found. Then we'll have a discussion depending on how many there are and whether you want to continue with the process. But we did, we did really well last year, so I'm hoping the same, the same continues. Again, I'm gonna repeat because it's worth repeating. Adjudicator recruiting is key here to, to secure your spots. So if you know of great people that you think would be fantastic adjudicators, I'd love to have them onboard. So you have various student opportunities to provide to your students throughout the year. Like I mentioned, we have student scholarships that will be catered to them now. We have Schuler Ensemble and Star Council members that come to the show and have an experience during Tech Week. We have student musician, at least one, although after speaking to Sam, he wants to add more, so that's really exciting. We started off cautiously, so hopefully we can expand how many musicians we offer in our live orchestra for the show. And we have our student reporters that we had to go on from this, our first time ever into not only a Schuler reporter, but also the Jimmy's reporter. And then they went on to be two of the top ten finalists. So we were really pleased with our first attempt at doing that for the Jimmy's. So that all exists, and that is for both tracks. That's key. Make sure you know, it doesn't matter if you're mentorship or whether you're competition, you have the ability to access all of those student opportunities. So here's your key dates, and if you're feverishly writing, you don't have to. I'm gonna put all these PDFs. I'm gonna put them online on our website and we will put them on our I G profile, link in bio, under the link tree, you'll be able to pull them from there. And also this recording. So both things will be accessible, but if you want to write them all down, there you go. Registration day, like I said, is August sixth, between three and seven. You'll get your rejects code on Wednesday, the sixth, and you'll need to complete it before August eleventh. Section A opens on the eleventh at eight A M. And adjudication date selection continues through the fifteenth. It only will open though after you've submitted section A, so that you can access the calendar. Our season, here we go. Here's our season. It begins October tenth and it ends March eighth, twenty twenty-six. That's a Sunday. Our registration fee payment due is Sunday, August thirty-first at eleven fifty-nine. So if you have a check, that means you have to plan for the Friday. Okay? Participating director's town hall, which is our Zoom, and it is so important to attend because the application is not easy. Ask anybody who's done it. And I walk you through it and I try and help you understand so you don't look at it by yourself and freak out. So attending that director's town hall is essential in the success of the program. And in addition to that, your director's application, and not application, I'm sorry, your director's handbook is your, is, is gospel according to Schuler. Okay, so definitely refer to that. It has all kinds of stuff. And if it still doesn't answer your questions, that's why I gave you my phone number and my email so you can give me a text or a shout out and I will help you through anything you need. So for the director's town hall, August tenth, oops. No, I'm sorry. Should say, it should say, is it the September? Isn't it September? Should say September. It didn't say the wrong date. I might have just typed it in wrong. It's September tenth, I'm sorry. That should be a Wednesday. Let me just double check here. Yep, September tenth, not August, my fault. Missed that one. I'll update it before getting your, getting your things in a PDF for you. When is the final director's packet due? So the, the whole packet is a beast. A is, every single one has different due dates. A is due all at the same time. D is due all at the same time. B and C is dependent on your adjudication date. So how it works, uh, section A is due by the fifteenth. Section B is due two weeks before your adjudication. It's kind of pre-adjudication or pre-production. All that information has to be done two weeks out. Section C is due two weeks after your adjudication date. So that's post-production or post-adjudication. And then section D is the, is post-nomination. So it's all the things leading up to the show. So it's, the final section is like, if you're attending the show, if you want to buy tickets, if you're having students walk on the purple carpet, if you have a nominee, if you are a nominee as a school, all that stuff falls into that bracket. If you're numb, if you're suggesting ensemble and Star Council students, all that is section D. Okay? Yes, this town hall will be available after the call ends. I will do the PDFs and the video links on both our website and in our I G bio thing, the link tree thing. You're welcome, Holly. And then Sequoia will be publishing the updated. Yep, I will, I will send it to all those that are registered. That's how I send it. So I don't necessarily publish our director's manual. It's very massive. I usually send it to all those that are registered, so you will get that with your registration. And be, hopefully before you, you even have to start section A. That's my goal, is to get all that. It's almost done. I'm just checking on a few more things. Uh, Mickey.
Hi. I wanted to clarify something with the qualifying roles list.
Sure.
I, I did a quick search when I was stopped in traffic and the twenty twenty-five roles list is up, but it says the new one doesn't come out till September first.
That's correct.
If we're looking at a show that we know's been released, would it be preferable that we go ahead and put that down, hoping it's gonna make it on the qualifying role list and change it, or just TBD?
So I would put down what you intend to do.
Okay.
Send me a message that, that you, that this is an issue. Call it to my attention. Then what you're, what we're gonna do is let's say when on September first it releases, if it's not on there, then we file an appeal.
Okay.
And that appeal has to be decided on. And then your only risk, like I said at the beginning, is your, your only risk of it not being accepted would be just your leading performers are not eligible to go on.
Understood.
So then you, then we have a discussion. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, but yeah, there are steps to take. So definitely put intention first because it doesn't happen until after we have to have everything in. So intended, and then we'll have follow-up discussion once I get a list.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Mickey. Any other questions? I can't see. Yeah, so holla or put your, raise your hand on your Zoom so it pops into the front. Well, this will all be available for you. I'll make that correction in the PDF so it says September tenth. Not August, sorry. You're very welcome, Tracy. Nice to see you again. And I will have all this available. It'll be a click away and you can refer to anything. And if you have any questions, comments, concerns, worries, freakouts, please text, call, or email me. Ah, you're welcome. I'm doing my best, man. All the changes, I'm trying. Thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure. If you have any other questions, please let me know. Bye. Thanks, Holly. John Casey, good to see you.